We'll have our recording.
Okay, mute it because.
It's not going to be broadcast.
Different.
For town's special city council meeting for May twenty second of two thousand and twenty three. We're going to see how good Councilman Shetty is praying without preparation. So please rise and while we pray. Actually, Councilman Billhauer.
I'm sorry, you only had the half left.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and this community and the people that that make a run. We are so grateful and we know that you have your hand in in all the decisions that we make and the things that we do. And now we ask you to give us guidance as a as a body to make decisions pleasing to you. And all God's people said, amen.
I'd like to leave Vince to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under the discipline of liberty and justice for all.
And it's Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay, Beeler. Beeler.
Yep.
Danforth.
Here.
Colleen.
There.
Paulson. Shetty.
Here.
Pepper. Billhauer. Thank you.
Coram is established. Uh, now is the time for public comments. If anyone is here who would like to address the council on something that is not on today's agenda, now is your time to do so. I see no one coming forward. I'll close the public comments here. Comment. Public comments portion. And Chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
Oh. Okay.
Motion made by Councilman Billhauer, second by Councilman Beeler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're going to tackle item B first, which is council council authorization for additional funding for mill and overlay and street reconstruction projects. Two, three, zero, two, two, three, zero, four, and to supplement the two thousand and twenty three capital outlay budget. By up to a million dollars. Are we heading to Public Works? Or City Manager Mac, would you like to take it off? Dr. Evil? Okay. Director Von I, it's your show.
Good one, man.
In that case, I was good.
All right, thank you. Uh. Share it. Yes, I was, am I not now? Actually, this item I don't need to share, but the next ones I will. Okay, I'll send you. Thanks. Um, so for their. For our funding request, um, everybody's full well aware that the winter was not kind to our streets throughout the city. Got a lot of uh, small um, pothole type of uh, distresses on our pavement surfaces here throughout the community. So we've got a couple of different projects that already bid. One is the mill and overlay, the other, and and with that is the uh, large patch project. They're both bid under one, one contract. And what we'd like to do is add additional work to that contract for mill overlay and patchwork. The other. Project that's already bid is our street reconstruct project. And uh, portions of the additional work we'd like to do would fall under that contract. So, long story short, we would uh, negotiate unit pricing with the bidder, the the, the contract holder for both of those projects. Because we're adding some quantities to it to the tune that would open the books to renegotiate some pricing. And then execute, bring a formal change order request forward to the council for approval. But before going to all that legwork, we wanted to get a heads up uh, that you would authorize us to transfer an additional million dollars. Um, from what we would call the uh, the two twelve fund, the the capital fund reserves. Um, they use that term loosely. I think Kristen maybe calls them something else, but it's the bucket of money we have parked aside in the capital fund. We'd like to pull a million dollars out of there and put it into this year's street projects. I'll point a couple of them out that we that we have uh, streets that are of interest. Uh, one of them is Ninth Street in front of the high school. We had anticipated making a couple of patches on there and getting that by another year, but it's simply um, like I mentioned earlier. Potted out quite a bit, so there's potholes all over and it's even worse shape than it was last fall. Uh, so we're not sure we'd want to limp it along another year. And we'd like to get that one done. Um, that's one of the larger ones to the tune of about uh, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then another couple hundred grand of large patching on Nineteenth Street Southeast. That'd be uh, back behind on your way into the back entrance of Menards for the loadout area there. There's some of the roadway that's blown out that we've lost that needs to be reconstructed, paved over. Uh, those are two big ones, but then there's also that list of other locations throughout town that are in the uh, the council packet. That summarize uh, other areas of work we'd like to do. With that, stand by for any questions.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh. Councilman, I do need to take action before we discuss it, unless you.
No, yeah, well, till we.
Okay, yep. Um, Chair will entertain a motion to authorize the additional funding. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Danforth. And now, Councilman Beeler.
Sorry, he, uh, just a question for you regarding uh, pottle filling, I guess. Are you, how many crews are we running? Are we outsourcing any of that activity?
Uh, no, none's being outsourced as of right now. Uh, I know one of the issues we've been up against is just the available availability of hot mix. Um, a lot of the initial pothole um. Work that you've seen has been done in cold mix that that we put into our hot box to heat it up. So at least places uh, nicely, um, but it simply doesn't last as long as the hot mix asphalt does. The other major that we've got uh, in the works is our spray patch machine that that sprays aggregate and oil into the potholes and fills them up. And that's usually pretty effective and that then provides a long lasting patch. Um, in order to get that operational, we've been working on an oil tanker that we bought last year to get that filled with oil. Oil availability nearby is um, difficult to find, so we may have to drive up to a couple hours away to go fill that tanker and bring it back to the site. Um, that and then staffing, we just are bringing on two new staff here uh, this week and next. And uh, um, that would then give us the availability to run a spray patch machine crew and a hot box machine crew for all the patching efforts for potholes.
So when would you anticipate you'd be up to full speed?
Be, it'd be a couple of weeks out here, we'll have more crews going than are now on the patch effort.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I do appreciate the the staff, whoever all is involved with this to to get get these projects on the radar. I drove around and looked at some of these and um, ironically, like on the one north Maple and tenth, I. I went by Broadway, I'm like, oh, this must be able to block off. So as you're looking at these, I come across other spots that are just as bad or or close to it. And so I do appreciate that we're we're making efforts, otherwise we'll get behind this. Um, just as far as determining these spots, I'm just kind of curious. Um, what's the, was it just, you know, someone on the street department that they they sent a notice as they're driving? Do people call in or just just curious how you get about the decision on these areas?
Yeah, I'd say it's a combination of both. Uh, we try to do a strategic effort of just, you know, combing a quadrant of town, for example, and and driving the streets and filling in as we come across them. And then, of course, uh, there are some complaint based uh, um, patchwork that we do as well as as people call in.
Thank you. Can you follow up? Councilman Paulson? We have a long line, so it goes Councilman Paulson, Danforth, Billhauer, send back to you, Councilman, and then Councilman Tupper.
Um, I have a few things on this. Um, on the Ninth Street portion of that, I know a few years ago, we looked at adding a uh, a concrete valley gutter. Uh, near the driveway to the high school, entrance to the high school. Uh, is that still in the works or is that, would that be incorporated into this project?
Yeah, would any resurfacing a knife that we would do, we'd put the necessary concrete valley gutters in. Both that that at that access you're referring to, Councilman, as well as at the intersection with Third Avenue. There are couple of concrete valley gutters are needed there as well, because the amount of surface flow running through that intersection. Um, it needs them as well there.
Okay. And. I mean, this goes back to my comments, uh, meeting the two ago about the municipal utilities. Um, I do struggle. I mean, I know we need this, I'm for this, uh, additional money. But there are a ton of streets in town that are seeing. Significant damage because of utility trenches that are not properly compacted, uh, that causes uh. Water to sit in on uh, and. Erosion and and things like that. And I really do think that they should be kicking in um, additional. And I I do think it should start this year because of our current roadways. Um, obviously, if we had a million dollars now, um, our budget's increasing by a lot. But we could do more. And I know we need to do more uh, as you drive around. There's a ton of streets around town that have just small potholes that eventually turn into larger potholes. I know we all see it, I know we all get comments about it. Um, and. I'm going to push this. Um, I could potentially only have a month left on the council, um, which only means a couple more meetings and. I mean, I'm going to push it until I'm not here anymore. So if I'm reelected, I'm going to continue seeing this, saying this uh, over and over and over again. Because I don't think it's right that they're getting away with not fixing what is their issue. Uh, we get blamed for it, and I think it's, it's a larger issue that needs to be addressed. Um. And I get, obviously, I brought up other issues with them too, but I think that this is first and foremost, um, just seeing where our roads are sitting. And with us taking additional action now to add funding for additional projects. I just, I I have great concerns if if they're not going to step up.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Danforth.
Well, um, um, I do have a question. Uh, Kristen, with with the million dollars going over, what does that leave the two twelves on that then?
So after I looked at the numbers, that will put us down to about the five point five of the unrestricted fund balance, five point five million. Um, which is kind of that comfort zone that we've talked about. So the one thing that the council with the approval of this action is they'll see it come back probably in July. I'm planning to do a budget supplement at that time. Um, so what the million dollars really means is that we are dipping back into that unrestricted fund balance. And any projects kind of going forward um, outside of the the budget really will have to be kind of thought through a little bit.
So maybe closer to the end of the year and we do the more supplemental items that come off of that five five.
Yep.
And then I'm sure you got a good handle on that. Um. One moment for a little smiley face here, but in church, I was attacked, I'll say attacked, about potholes. And then simultaneously, I was attacked about selling the the uh, showmobile. So I said, well, we're selling the showmobile so that we can patch more road. Anyways, I had to make up your mind, do you want showmobile or we're going to patch roads? But anyway, that's my, was my only question.
I think church would be a place to forgive you, see, maybe people would grant you some grace there. Councilman Billhauer. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Von I, do I understand right that the asphalt plant is still not up and running?
It's been up and running intermittently here the last week or so.
That that is just crazy that they cannot get going sooner in the spring and then they shut down so early in the fall. So that just to to me is not acceptable from what we need from them. And um, so they just just a comment, I guess, not a question there. Uh, I guess you have a question, a follow up question for you, Director Von I, relative to what Council Paulson said. Is is there any practical or realistic way to identify the areas that Council Paulson is referring to?
Um, yeah, thanks for circling back on that. I had some thoughts as Councilman Paulson was speaking. One of the things we're. We've been working with utilities on in a very collaborative way is uh, you know, really what it comes down to is their contractors work. And sometimes the contractors that are doing the backfill and compaction effort or lack thereof. That's really what the direct result of some of the the dips in the road from the utility cuts are caused from. So how do we work collaboratively with utilities to help prevent that from happening? Because I guarantee you, utilities doesn't like to see that happen either, just like we in engineering or uh, robbing streets doesn't like to see it happen. So um, working with with Bert Magstead, working with uh, their their utility folks. Um, you know, whether it's through our street cut permits and just making sure that their contractors are getting compaction tests would be step one. And. I don't know how successful we've been on that in the recent past, but that's definitely something we're going to need to be looking at requiring here moving forward. Um. There are a handful of paps is out there yet that need to be made this spring that were cut through the winter months. And those have been uh, gotten by with gravel surfacing that, of course, rattles potholes. Uh, but those are, those would be perfect place to start. We do know generally where those are at uh, throughout town. Um. But I think, you know, Justin and I collaborating with utilities, getting a game plan together that makes sense for everybody to make sure their contractors are held accountable. So that neither party, the utilities or city are having to deal with this later on. Because again, I'm pretty sure we're all on the same page with that goal in mind.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question for Manager Mac or whomever. Is our website, we've we've started reporting potholes, is that up and running and people using it or aware of it or?
Yes, all of the above. I don't get any of those when they come in. I think they go directly to uh, the street, street division.
Okay, thank you. I'll actually say something, I have had some people reach out to me and say that they have been very pleased with the pothole reporting website. And that when they uh, report one, it gets filmed. So that has been at least working from the people who I've talked to. Councilman Tupper.
Just piggyback a little bit on your comment there. I I don't think it's just the potholes, the people that that do actually engage in the city website, there's there's a lot of different. Avenues there of of not only reporting potholes, but you know, through code enforcement, stuff like that. And and I'm, people I do engage have been very, very pleased with it. Uh, my question to Director Von I, and the ninth avenue, is that a complete reconstruct then or is that no overlay or?
That would be um, a complete reconstruct. With uh. We're we're preliminarily looking at doing new curb on the east side and creating a uh, a boulevard buffer there for snow storage. Right now, it's it's curbside sidewalk, which isn't very good for snow removal. Uh, it's very old dilapidated curb that could use replaced, would really help dress up the front of that high school there after they've completed that multi-million dollar remodel.
Okay, I think the rest of my questions have already been answered, so.
Thank you. Councilman Beeler, back to him.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure you're probably aware of it, Heath, but I just wanted to point out that the airport in that vicinity out there like Piper, Cessna. Dragged through those roads here lately and those are really bad, really, really bad. I know we've got a lot of commerce going. So just wanted to make sure we're aware of that.
Thank you. Those are on our list and uh, they're kind of like right next in line here. We debated whether we could get them in yet this year or not, because it doesn't look like we quite will be able to, but they're definitely on our list. Um, if I could quick, Mayor, I want to emphasize this this uh, Ninth Street in front of the high school. It is tentative on the contractor schedule. I don't want to promise tonight that that road will get done. Um, it, the the earlier discussions we've had sound favorable to make it happen, but we got to make sure that their timing is going to get it done before school starts. We obviously don't want that road tore up uh, after school starts. So that particular street is contingent on the contractor being able to make it work. If for some reason they're not able to, other streets like Collins, Councilman Beeler just listed are waiting in the wings that we could easily plug that additional money into. And you would ultimately decide on based on the final change order that comes forward.
Thank you, Councilman Billhauer.
Thank you, Mayor. I I guess you you just addressed what I was going to ask Director Von I. I mean, boy, if at all possible, to try to get that ninth Ninth Street um, project done this summer. I mean, I realize you got only only so much time for school starts, but that has been in bad, bad shape the last couple of school years. Hate to go through another school year uh, with the getting it in order. So just just my comment, I appreciate your thought on it.
Thank you. Any further comments? The motion is to approve the authorization of additional funding. All those in favor will please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item A is an approval of a resolution for the exchange of land and authorize the city manager to finalize the terms and execute the agreement for the exchange of real property between the city of Watertown and Root Pelmer Group LLC. We will start with our city manager, Amanda Mack, on this. Our city attorney, Lisa Carrico, is online, I believe, and ready to answer questions from her legal perspective as well. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to get it pulled up. This uh, is, for all intents and purposes, a an exchange of land with Root Pelmer um, out at the Sail Barn site that we have purchased for use of our street facility. Um, we would be exchanging a portion um, on the north end of our land for what is currently the Stockman's Cafe. Um, it will square out our land and aid in um, further development of the of the property on the north end that we'd be exchanging for. Um, the community development, engineering divisions, Public Works and our city attorney have spent a lot of time uh, working through this with with all of the parties. Um, they can answer technical questions on this for you.
All right, thank you. Attorney Carrico, do you want to address, say something before we take action or do you want to stand by for questions?
Um, I guess I would say initial, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just so you know, the agreement that you're looking at in draft form that was uh, attached as an exhibit to the resolution for today's agenda. The only uh, substantive change to that agreement that was made uh, was that the payment of uh, toward the infrastructure costs. Uh, is half of it now in this year and then half of it upon completion of the infrastructure at the end of next year. And I'll let Heath add on to that as you get into questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have two actions that we need to take, one on the exchange agreement and one on the council resolution. Uh, I will allow discussion and questions regarding both, but right now, do I have to take them separate? Or? Okay. Oh, there is a public hearing, so. Um, so I'll open up a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address this council on this issue? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Um, say, do I have a motion to approve the exchange agreement? Motion made by Councilman Beeler, second by Councilman Tupper. We will start with that. Once that action is then resolved and voted on, then we will move on to council resolution twenty three twenty. But I will allow discussion, questions, comments upon both actions right now. Any questions or comments, council? All right. I will. Ask for a vote on the exchange agreement. All those in favor of the exchange agreement, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now, Chair will entertain a motion to approve council resolution twenty three twenty. Motion made by Councilman Paulson, second by Councilman Billhauer. Any discussion of this, council? Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to make a comment. Um, you know, we have pondered this decision for a while now as far as the opportunity came to us. And it's hard to get a dollar for dollar's exact exchange of what something's worth here. But um, to me, the the compelling thing was the fact that we can get um, this land uh, exchanged. And I'm I'm saying this for the public of there and we're in that, we're having questions, comments, so much. But um, it really helps facilitate our goal of getting that land to the north developed by by swapping this out. That was the real deciding factor for me. And I just wanted the public to know that that it's it's uh, in the long term, it should benefit the development of that area. And this helps facilitate that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion is to approve council resolution twenty three twenty. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item C is an approval of amendment number two of the professional services agreement for services associated with the design and bidding of the new Public Works. Street Division Facility with JLG Architects for a net increase of six hundred and four thousand dollars roughly and total contract amount of one million. Thirteen thousand dollars roughly, fourteen thousand dollars. So we'll start it off by going to city manager.
I'll just take it right over to our Public Works Director.
Public Works Director Heath Von I.
Thank you, Mayor, city manager. Um, yes, uh, JLG Architects was initially selected as our design professional for the new um, Public Works Street Division Facility. In September of twenty one, I actually had to go back and check that date. I didn't realize it had been that long ago that we actually entered into contract with JLG. For some preliminary pre-designed services and site selection services for the new street facility. Um, since then, of course, we entered into a full design contract and um, that was um, to the tune of a little under four hundred thousand dollars. Um, as design has progressed, uh, we and as some costing has come in since we got our construction manager at risk on board. Uh, we quickly, quickly realized that uh, the price escalation that we also saw on the ice arena. Um, is going to impact the street facility cost estimates and overall uh, construction costs. So what this amendment does is allows D L G to move forward with the design of the street facility, street maintenance facility. Um, and the multitude of buildings that are needed on that complex. That includes a heated storage building, um, a cold storage building, a salt sand shed that is needed for those materials. Uh, wash bay, uh, the heated storage will also have attached to it um, a repair bay or a vehicle fleet maintenance type of shop area. With the appropriate uh, space we need for a a future centralized fleet management program. Um, and uh, any other ancillary things and then office space, of course, to connect it to that heated storage building. Uh, this this had been, we had pressed the pause button on this for some time. As you know, we were considering a combined city complex out there. We also had JLG do some work on that effort to explore those options to make sure that we were vetting all things um, when considering that. This amendment does not take any consideration into designing a city complex, but just a street maintenance facility at this point in time. So with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Director. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendment. Motion made by Councilman Shetty, second by Councilman Billhauer. Open it up for discussion. Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, I guess, for Director Von I. From one project to another, for example, the, you know, Ice Arena versus the street facility. Is there a difference in the in the fees or in the scope of what a company like this would do for? It's a whole different project, you know, as far as the maybe dollar amounts, you can have similar dollar amounts, but some projects have got, you know, I guess, I don't want to minimize what they're doing out there, but building a storage shed versus an ice arena. You know what I'm saying? And there's more to it than just a few storage sheds. But is there a difference in the scope? Does that affect the the, you know, the cost of of this company uh, for doing one project versus another? Or is it just kind of a percentage thing kind of across the board? So I'm sure there's lots more information to look through for uh, putting an ice arena together versus a a project like this possibly? Or maybe I'm just way off from my thought process, but I just wanted to kind of get some. But I just wanted to kind of get some feedback on that.
Uh, no, Councilman Shetty, those, those nuances to each product, project definitely do impact the fee that we're, that we're assessed and that we enter into contract for. That fee, of course, is usually always linked to the construction costs and it's a percentage of those construction costs. So that's not anything different from one contract to the next. I don't know off the top of my head, I don't know what Justin does, but what, I don't know what fee we're paying on the ICE Arena. Um, this fee per, through the design and bidding phase is five point eight percent of the construction estimate. And the total fee through construction would end up being seven point two-five percent of the construction costs. Um, that additional one and whatever remaining there between the five, eight, and the seven and a quarter would come at a later date when we enter into a construction admin contract. Uh, I want to say the ICE Arena was around closer to ten, ten percent maybe. Uh, but again, I'd be making a guess there based on for resurrection.
What was, so you're thinking around seven or ten percent of those?
Seven, I think it was seven point two, seven point one. And if it were in the sevens, of course, that'd be pretty identical to what this contract is seeing here.
So out in the public, there's some discussion as to what that rate was at the ICE Arena facility. Um, Director Von I had guessed upwards to ten percent. Councilman Beeler was saying maybe down to seven point five. Um, I guess we could find that out for sure, but doesn't necessarily change the nature of your question. Right. Councilman Bill Howard?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a few questions, I guess. Um, any comments? I mean, I, I know looking at the uh, the cost estimate on the uh, the ICE Arena report, we finally locked that, that in. Uh, but we're, we're looking at more than doubling the, the estimate from six point eight to fourteen point six here. Any, any comments a- about that? That, that's made us horrendous uh escalation. Is it, is what it is, or is there, are we expanding the scope or any comments, uh, Director? I'll direct it to Director Von I.
Yeah, in hindsight, I think that six eight could have been updated um before we would, we entered into the initial contract. That's a budgetary number. We were just trying our best to stick to. And then it became apparent that that wasn't going to get us very far uh soon into the design phase of, of the project. That six eight was established some time ago though, based on other regional projects. Uh, Dual County down by Clear Lake built a new facility five, six, seven years ago. Um, Brookings built a new street maintenance facility about the same amount of time ago. Um, we had some regional numbers in establishing that six point eight, but of course, all that data is well, part of history now at this point. And is all more a part of history today than it was a year and a half ago. Um, but you know, if you remember the ICE Arena numbers, they'll ship it on us in about a year and a half timeframe, almost to the same tune as these have. And that's, that's what I would liken it to. Could we have done better a year and a half ago in setting that six eight? Yeah, uh, in hindsight, being twenty-twenty, we could have. Um, but that's the best, best information I can share for you.
Thank you. Uh, I guess I'll probably direct the question to uh city manager back. So are we saying, okay, let me back up. When you said that what we're approving does not, does not include any kind of uh fee for a combined city complex, so are we by default saying that we're giving up on, on that idea by, by virtue of what we're approving here?
Yes.
Okay, I, 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 I think it's important the public understand what we are acting on tonight, that uh we are now taking that, that option off the table. Okay, with, with, with that, with that question, I do have a question about the nu, about the numbers though, and I don't want to, you know, get in the weeds here, but I guess I will. One item specifically, it says amendment number two also includes one hundred and fifty-two thousand and change uh for additional services related to site analysis, program facilities, site, city, street layouts, and city complex planning. And then when I go into JLG's document, there was a figure of about forty-nine thousand dollars regarding city complex slash hall, initial scoping slash programming uh that is part of that one hundred and fifty-two thousand. So i- 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 is that an expense we've already incurred, or are we paying for something that we won't be incurring, but it's still on their bid?
That's an expense already incurred, County. It has been incurred, yes.
Okay. Okay, I guess that was my, my questions.
Which essentially ate up some of the former contract dollar amount by having them vet those options.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
Director Von I, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that total of fourteen point, whatever you said, fourteen eight or whatever, that also includes the uh land purchase, doesn't it?
Uh, that is strictly, uh, no, it does not. That is strictly the construction estimate for those structures.
Councilman Danforth?
Uh, thank you. Um, Heath's got a question. Um, are we required? Is there any law that dictates that, that at a certain cost uh size of a project for a structure, a building, or whatever, that we have to have architectural uh design services? For example, if I was going to build, for example, let's just, and I'm making up a number, right? I'm going to build a salt sand storage shelter. It's twenty grand. Do I have to have an architect for that?
In order to get a building permit, you would have to have uh stamped plans from either a structural engineer uh in order to accomplish pulling a building permit for a structure of that nature.
Okay, because here, here's where I'm at on this. Like, if, if I were in business and doing this, I can see having a, the, the main structure, which is going to house the, the offices, et cetera. I, I can understand that with the, from an architect, there's more to that. But if I was a, a business individual, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have an architect doing cold storage building. I wouldn't have an architect doing salt and sand storage. I mean, people do it all the time. Uh, I probably wouldn't have them do the heated storage part of it. I, that, those are happening, being built all the time. I mean, farmers are doing it all the time if you drive, run out in the country. Um, my question that we, the need for us to have every aspect, every building out there with an architectural design that we're paying five, six, seven percent to get when I can go to the, the contractors and, and with their, their engineers and I can get a certified building, I've done it myself a number of times. I didn't have an architect involved. So I, I guess I'm questioning for the depth and, and the number of buildings here that why we need architectural services in every aspect of this. But maybe you can help me with that one, because it just seems silly when there's other means to accomplish the same thing without that cost.
Um, I guess my, my off the cuff response is it almost seems just as silly to me not to have an architect involved because of the complexities. Uh, I don't know if that is an appropriate spin on answering your question or not, but um, you know, you talk about the heated storage, for example. Um, there's a lot of factors that come into that. I don't know of a construction company that has their, an engineer on staff that would give us a number for heated storage facility and a plan set that's stamped, that you could just walk in and sit down at a table and figure that out with. Um, but again, it all comes down to those stamped drawings. We need a stamped drawing for every one of these buildings in order to get a city building permit. As would be the requirement for anybody in the private sector as well. So some of your, some of your wood structures, yeah, those companies oftentimes do have um like a pre-engineered package that they're working with a, a licensed engineer, sometimes in another state that's licensed in South Dakota. And you can sit down at a table with them and look through a catalog and say, I want this Morton Building, for example, or whatever kind of shop it might be. And it's a wood structure and it's pre-engineered and it's been stamped by an engineer. And then they share those stamped drawings with our building official and off they go with the building permit to construct it. Now, when you get into pre-cast concrete um structures, those are obviously a little bit different, where those are usually designed uh by the design professional, architect, or structural engineer. Um, some of your metal frame buildings, which some of the components out here will be, you could find it pre-fab, or uh pre-engineered metal frame buildings. And that's what the architect would work on in that design, is finding a design that would be considered a pre-engineered metal building, uh, if that were to benefit us. Um, you know, so I, it all comes down to that design professional having that stamp on that design and then our ability to get what we need from anybody outside of an architectural contract, or inability to get what we need outside of an architectural contract.
Oh, yeah, and we, it just seems odd because I get the opportunity to go around to primarily uh at this point, um, ag clients and, and people that I've worked with that have massive buildings for their, their equipment and such now. And I know they're, and, and most of those or a lot of those are pre-cast. I know they're not using engineering or um architectural design engineering services for those. Um, I, I'm just, I, I throw that out there because I think sometimes we just, we, um, you know, like you can't chase a dead cat. You, you, it's hard to beat a dead horse too sometimes, and I think that's what we do sometimes, because that's the way the process has been done. And I just question that on some of these things that is necessary to, to pay additional fees where we're probably already paying them from whoever's supplying the building in the first place to some extent. So anyway.
Councilman Beeler?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a similar question, I guess, uh, Director Von I, in regards to pre-engineered steel building. And I understand now that you're, you're saying we use the services of the architectural firm to determine what building, what size, what type. Uh, and pre-engineered buildings, I don't know a big building, what's necessary for architecture for, say, the concrete slab, the compaction, all, the footings, all that kind of stuff. But you know, I, I gotta, I kind of got to agree with Mike. If there's a way we can do this without a, with, without the services of uh an expensive architecture firm with a pre-engineered building, I think we certainly need to take a look at it.
Councilman Shetty?
Uh, yeah, basically, that's, Mike is probably better put than what I was trying to get at, but that was my point, was trying to look at the, at the, the fees. Are they, are they, are they looking at the fees? Are they adjusted for the scope of the building versus just kind of across the board? Because there's probably a lot less architect work involved in a project like that than in a, you know, than some other projects that they work on. I just was wondering, yeah, how they determine the fees that we're looking at today. And, and that's just my question, I guess, for quandary. I'm trying to kind of process myself too, so.
Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just want to point out from, I mean, even the engineering side, private engineering side is you have a, you have a rate to design, you have a rate to, so it may be less work in the end, but they still have a rate that they charge. Um, so I don't know if it's better to do it by hour or, well, I get what everyone's saying, but um, I guess it, to be fair to JLG is, it's a rate for their services. Whereas, I mean, it's a professional service, so you're paying a rate for it. Um, and that, that's common. And that's what, that's what I see in the engineering world. And I would say that's the world they're in, you know, their architects. But um, that's, I just wanted to point that out, that it's just the fee that you see, just like, you know, we, we pay an engineer to set up our developments, but if we had them design one lot, it's the same fee, it's just going to be there per hour. So it's going to be different in that end, but I get, I just wanted to point that out, that the fee is.
Councilman Tupper?
I think there's a little bit more that falls into that than, than what we're all realizing, and all due respect for all, everybody else's comments. But that's also going to be what everybody sees when they drive into Watertown from the north. And aesthetics plays a big role in that, what we decide to build. And if we want to just build a bunch of pre-engineered steel buildings, that's exactly what we're going to have, is a bunch of pre-engineered steel buildings. But I don't think that's our desire is to just build a bunch of steel buildings out there. I mean, it has to be an attractive looking place. It is like you say, or, or namesake when you come in from the north. And I think, think a lot of those fees will tie a lot of those together, and I know that for a fact, because we got a building right across the street, kitty corner across from us that was a pre-engineered steel building that was, was a good, we thought was a good cause for, or a good type of building for that cause. And, and I paid a lot of grief for it the last ten, twelve years just because it serves. So let's just be careful when we're talking, just let's just throw a pre-engineered building, so.
Thank you. Uh, Director Von I, a question from me is I know that there had been at least some consideration that not all of the street department facility would be built at the exact same time. Does this affect that?
Um, I think, so this, this contract would be to design all those structures, so we could always carry this contract out through completing the design for every one of those structures. And if we had a time, um, a timeline where we've had to phase those structures in, for example, we do the heated storage and office buildings the first year. The second year, we add on the cold storage, third year, salt sand. There might be some kind of a financial timeline that we'd want to put this together in. But as long as we get the design package complete, we can set them on a shelf and wait until we're ready to bid those other components later on if need be. If that makes sense.
It does.
If, if I could, uh, to, to um add on to Councilman Tupper's point. Um, I was trying to think of the same thing and articulate it in a way like Councilman Tupper did, that, you know, this is different than uh, you know, machinery storage building in, in the county um for a few different reasons. One, because it's not that. Two, we're not in the county. Um, we are in the city. We, we go by a different building code than what the county does. I'm not sure to the extent that the county uh administers building permits for everything that's done in the county, a lot of the ag, ag complexes and things of that nature. So that, that can look and feel a lot different than what we're working with here. And, and absolutely, if we were just doing pre-engineered steel or wood structures, uh, this would look a lot different too. But for what we're trying to accomplish, I professionally don't know of any other way. You know, again, I don't think there's a contractor in town that sets pre-cast concrete structures that would sit down and design with you and be a benefit, um, that's not going to still cost you money. And is that money then, that they're going to charge you much less than what we're getting out of JLG? I don't know, but nobody's going to do their work for free. They're each going to charge you an architectural or engineering component, no matter whose door you walk into. And here, they're custom designing this to meet our needs, which is a very important and critical part of this process. So I don't know if any of that helps with some of those questions, but uh, I thought I'd add that.
Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, thank you. I just, I mean, I definitely want this, I'm one of those, I like projects to be done well and, and uh, and give, for example, the street department what they need. So I'm all for this. I just, again, just answering my questions, I think, to the input, just as far as, I guess, part of it is the nature of the beast. I guess, working in the governing side of things. I mean, I've done some personal projects, you know, for a few hundred thousand dollars that I've worked on. And I was able to save, let's say, thirty percent off based off of doing some of that work myself. Uh, but I guess when it comes to this scope of things, it's just kind of the nature of the beast, I guess, to make sure everything, all I's are dotted and T's are crossed. But yeah, that was just my question on how they go about coming up with fees, because some projects have a little more bounding issues than other projects. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilman Danforth?
I'd like to just tag on to your question, uh, because as I read this, this is for uh, design and bidding services. All right, so I get the design part. You, you address that, but what if it's a year, two years before we bid it? And what if a year, two years down the road, the costs are higher? So then it, does that, does this number change with A potentially at two years down the road and Lord knows what we're thinking at then. And so is that a stagnant number? It's fixed and we're paying upfront, and when the time comes to build it or to go out and get a bid that we're already covered there, are they going to come back and ask for more? Because it's two years down the road, one question. And then if prices go up, then at one point oh, one, four million dollars could go up, correct? Or is that a fixed number?
Um, I'd say that to your first question, the um, whether we bid everything right now and whether that price would go up, this fee would go up. I'd say usually not. You know, the, the design professionals are usually pretty um flexible with us that way. I'd say usually not, you know, the, the design professionals are usually pretty, um, flexible with us that way. So if it's a year down the road, sometimes even two years down the road, and we're in the midst of a, of a, an active project that's being phased in. They're, they usually don't come knocking back on our door and saying, oh yeah, by the way, the price crept up on this. Watch bay that we estimated two years ago. And so normally it's just, it just works itself out because they're working with us through the construction phases. And they're not, they're not looking to nickel and dime us every step of the way. That's not to say that they can't approach if there is a, a huge swing in the numbers for some reason. That they can't approach us and ask for, uh, additional monies to perform the bidding services.
Can we get some kind of timeframe in here that says. Now in two years or three years, this is stagnant cost, it's a fixed cost?
Yeah, there might, because this is an AIA document, uh, a standard national architectural document. It, it probably has some price escalation language in there that I don't off the top of my head. Uh, I'm looking at Justin to see if he's familiar with any. But I'm guessing that's covered. I could definitely confirm that and see.
I mean, cause I think that's kind of where, where the mayor was kind of heading with this thing is, we, we don't exactly know how this is gonna pan out. We got a lot, a lot of balls in the air and tried to. Yuggle things financially with some of this stuff. Um, you know, we talked about this project. Likely being, going through phases, they go to one, two, three, whatever it is. And whatever that timeframe is, they, you know, at best, it already puts us into twenty twenty four. So we're probably gonna at twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, probably before. Um, you know, we get to the final stages of this. It would be good to know that. We have a locked in price. I, I, I just don't want to see somebody coming back a year, two years from now going, okay, we need another fifty thousand dollars because you waited. Um, I would like to see if we can to get something to go shit and just get a fixed term in there and, and maybe it's two years. Um, something. And again, not knowing what the languages and the, the AI contracts, but, uh, I would like to see, I think that's at least worth our. Time to explore and see exactly where we're at. Cause that's highly likely in regards to this thing getting phased in, so. Um. Anyway, that, I think that's just something that we should take a look at.
Uh, City Engineer Peterson, I see your wheels turning in your head back there. I was wondering if you had an answer, and if not, I could also call on City Attorney Lisa Carrico if she knows of any. Price escalation or time limits in this contract. And also, um, wondering if. I thought that you possibly had another comment, but wasn't sure. So, City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was, and my wheels turning, I, I don't. I don't know if the, the wording is in there, but just from experience. Generally speaking, when, when architects design, design these things, that, that. Unless the scope of the project, like we had another building or something, uh, generally speaking, they're designing. What's in the contract. So they're designing these five buildings. And if the prices. If the construction prices go up, they generally don't, uh, change, I guess. But in the contract, I was just trying to think if there's any specific wording that says that I.
Uh, thank you. I guess I have a follow-up question on that. I just want some clarification. So. And I, and Director Von I, I get what you were saying. It's like, generally, this is the practice and I, I, I can respect that. I guess I'm just concerned, over the last couple of years, a lot of the old ways of doing business have been. disbanded and new, the new normal for, using the phrase that people are. Adopting because of post-COVID. I'm not really sure if we're in a new normal yet. I guess I, 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 I would like. Maybe some assurance or comfort that we aren't going to. Be in a pickle either with the rising escalation cost or. Yeah, Director Von I.
Yeah, if I, if I could put that into context, I'm looking at the, uh, the actual AIA document here from the architect. And they have it broken out into several phases. Once the site development, then the design development, then the construction documents. And then the bid phase. The bid phase is only five percent of this contract total that right now is valued at thirty one thousand seven hundred dollars. That's really the number that we're talking about here is that bid phase, based on the initial question. I just wanted to put this in perspective because that five percent of the fourteen some million. Uh, that thirty one thousand dollars is gonna change minutely in the whole scheme of things here, if that helps everybody. Uh. I, I should have thought of that earlier in this conversation. I apologize I didn't, but it's really, it's a, it's a small number in the whole scheme of things, if you could look at it that way.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Paulson.
Sorry, um, I'm just looking at the AIA document online right now. After this discussion came up, and there is a clause, I, I don't know if this is the right, it's just the guide to the. Um. The guide to the supplementary conditions. Um, but it does say in here that. If the owner and architect are concerned about facing such price escalations in certain materials, they should identify those, those materials prior to the bid and. Provide for them and the bidding requirements as alliances. Which goes back to kind of what we did in, on the ice arena is that we locked in materials. Material prices early, we even ordered some early, even though we weren't fully through everything. Uh, they included a big, big contingency, uh, which helps factor in those, that, the escalations. Um, but yeah, working, working together actually. I, I'm just kind of what I've been reading here is working together usually iron sinks out, so, um. I, I think they did a really good job on the, the ice arena side of things. So that's, so I just wanted to chime in here that not only is that what it says, but I think. Um, they've shown good faith on the ice arena. I think that they'll definitely show good faith going forward on, on the street, so.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper.
This is more of a suggestion than a question. This is a, a pretty large sum of money. Why didn't we require JLG to be here? If, if we're talking about this much money in any meeting coming up in the future, I think that should be required, so. That would be nice to have them here so they had their answers to the questions we have.
They've been very accommodating in the past. We just didn't ask them. So that's, that's not on them. Um. And oftentimes we do have consultants here and they, they never get called on. So it really just depends on the, uh, on the contract, I guess.
I wasn't blaming them. I, I think it's more on us that, that whenever we're talking this kind of money, there should be. Some kind of trigger that says, hey, can you guys be here? Even if they don't get asked a question, so.
I could, uh, I, I guess, any last comments I could add is I would just emphasize the importance of this contract. As your city engineer, as your public works director. It would be totally uncommon and very difficult for us to find a way to accomplish this project without a design professional on board. And you could talk to any other city around us within a hundred mile radius or even beyond, and they would all agree with you that. What we're proposing here is not uncommon at all and is, I think, critical in order to carry this project through. Um, I don't see any way of doing it frankly, without entering into a contract like this.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, discussion? The motion is to approve the amendment. All those in favor will say aye, oppose, say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Yulur. Danforth. Colleen. Paulson. Chuddy. Tupper. Bill Howard. Well, she carries.
Well, she carries. We're gonna bounce around ever so slightly. We're gonna go to item E. Make sure that we get this done tonight. Uh, just for those at the council, uh, City Manager Mac does have a city function tonight at. Five thirty, five fifteen. Uh, we can be a little flexible with time, but, um. We want to prioritize with the time that we have and see what we can get done. So we will move to item E. Which is an appropriation and subsidy policy and guidelines session.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, what you have in front of you is a proposed policy on how, uh, the city will accept. Applications from outside agencies and, uh, the process by which we will recommend, um, approval for city dollars that, that go. Um, to those entities. Uh, some of the other topics tonight are related to the budget process and this is. Part of that. Uh, we have already begun, um, our budget work. Our finance officer has sent out. Uh, multiple correspondence to all of the departments, uh, as we start to, to build, um, the twenty twenty four budget. Uh, this policy in front of you is, is purely a draft. Um, it's compiled from a couple of other communities. That have, uh, similar policies on the books. Um, and I do think it's important to have a clear direction from this body. On who can receive city funds and for what purposes. Um, I've also, we've also attached to this. Uh, just a sample application, um, that we would require these agencies to fill out. We don't. Currently have an application process. They just sort of send in their requests throughout the year. We try to compile them, make sure we don't miss any. Um, but there's no real formal guidelines on how we give that money out, who we give it to. Um, so that's what you have in front of you. I did send this out to all of you. Um, several times throughout the last several months. So hopefully, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it and. Um, I'll stand by for, for questions and, uh, look forward to the discussion.
Just to note, uh, for the public, anyone who might be watching this now or in the future, some of the, you can view the application. On the city agenda website, uh, by clicking into the information, but. Some of these questions that we would be asking on this application are some like. Are there any other organizations funding this project? Uh, if granted, how will these funds be used? Are there any additional funds contributing to the cause? And also, please include a current financial statement for the organization that is asking the city for money. This is not to say that any organization that is currently receiving city funding is doing anything improper. But this is an effort on behalf of City Manager Mac and the entire city to just better formalize. The process and protect the city going forward to make sure that we don't just get into a habit of funding and not asking questions. Uh, just making sure that we understand the organizations that we are helping and that. We know what city dollars are being used for specifically. But that, Councilman Tupper?
I, uh, I looked at this very closely and being involved with, with, uh, United Way for many years and, and also sitting on their allocations committee for many years. I, I, I look at this as, you know, that the people that donated money to United Way, we were their stewards of their dollar. And it's no different with the tax dollars that people spend, spend their money and then it goes into the, the city coffers. We need to be. A good steward of their dollars. And, and I think this process is, is great process. I've looked it over. I don't see any changes. I think it's just being more responsible with people and then being more accountable with people to. Make sure that we're, uh, we're spending their tax dollars wisely and, and I would totally support this, so.
Councilman Paulson.
Mayor, um, this goes back to some of my comments made a couple meetings ago as well. Um. And I'm a huge proponent of accountability. And I think we haven't seen necessarily some of that accountability through. Where some of our money's going and not intentionally, I don't think. I think it's just kind of, we've given money to these. These programs or, or, um, businesses and we haven't seen necessarily the return or we haven't seen. Uh, them come and, um, have that accountability on, in front of the council. And. I really would suggest that, you know, some of this language changed to, instead of encouraging. Um, to deutilize performance measures. I think we should require that. Because I do think that there has to be some measurable accountability. Um, and I do think that if, if we're using taxpayer dollars. Uh, for any purpose, I think that that needs to be pretty transparent. So I would suggest that they have to report to the city council. At least yearly, if not, at least twice a year. Um, where the funds are going, how it's benefiting our community. And I know that's kind of laid out here in a little, a little bit, but I think that there needs to be a little bit more language. Saying that it's required, not necessarily suggested. Um, just because I. I think, yeah, like I said previously, I, I think that there's, it's kind of slipped through the cracks over the years and. Now that if we're gonna do this, let's, let's do it right.
City Manager Mick.
Hello, sir. Thank you, Councilman Paulson. Um, so just to provide some clarification on that section, so. Encourages the subsidy recipients to utilize performance measures. If they don't. That's how we, we would grade, if you will, their application. So, um, the performance measures that are listed are things that when. I'm looking at the application, Kristen's looking at it, when we're making a recommendation to this body, we can say. Uh, they base their application on, um, objectives that tie to the council's goals and programs. Um. They show us what they're, what they're as, what they, the organization's measurements are for tracking progress. Um, the other thing that this policy does is. While it gives the flexibility to provide funding for operations for organizations, if this body decides that that's an appropriate use of resources. It largely shifts the intent away from operations and into a more project-based, um, uh, uh. More, uh, more project-based so that you can measure performance better. So we're requesting money for. I don't know, a new sound system at the community theater. Well, we certainly can see progress on that if it's, if it's done or not versus. We want to add an employee to do marketing. You, you know, those are very different performance measures. Um. And one might be more desirable to, to fund that than the other. So that. You're right, we, we do need to be tracking performance, but this section is encouraging the applicants. To figure out what their performance measures are that we can hold them accountable to. Now. What I've seen, um, in other communities, including ones that I've worked in, we do have entities, so the Chamber, the CBB, WDC. Who, um, by and large handle what we consider economic development for the community. We evaluate those organizations differently than say we would the community theater on their request. You know, so if, if someone is applying for what I would consider operational, um, expenses. Then it's incumbent on us to place expectations on them, right? So we will grant these dollars, but here are. The expectations we have. We will report quarterly, you know, we've, um. We want an emphasis on workforce housing, uh, whatever it is that you all deem necessary, but to. Lay all of that on in policy becomes really cumbersome and doesn't give you all the flexibility when something. Comes that doesn't quite fit into the, the specifics that, that you can fund it and, and, um. Feel like that's an appropriate way to fund it.
Follow-up, Councilman? Yes. Um, and I respect that, um, and I, I do agree with most of that. I do. At the very minimum, think that there should be in policy in this writing that they're required to give a presentation. If they're meeting their, even their own standards, um, to the city council. And. I think we have struggled with that because, and I'm not gonna pick them at WDC, but I'm gonna use them as example right now is. To the general public, we can say, what are they, what businesses did they bring in? Well, I know that there's a lot behind the scenes that they're working on and they're doing a lot of things that aren't necessarily. Out in the public. And that's where, that gives them a chance to tell us that not necessarily. It, and that is one, and that's where I will give them props is, they usually do give us an annual review of what. Kind of what, if they're following their business strategy and, and things like that, but, um. But I, I do think that that should be a requirement in this is, is give a presentation. Not only are they meeting their standards, but are they following? And you know, our standards and objectives too, because I, I do think that. They have to co-align with the direction of the council in this city. And we already elected. To represent the direction of this city. And that's where I think. Some of this has fallen away over time. And I, I could be way off. And I I could be way off on this. I just don't know because we have a lot of money going to organizations that we've never heard from. At least my time on the council. So that's just, I I think that that would just be appropriate. I don't know their support behind that.
Uh, councilman, uh, city manager Mick has something.
So I would just, so there is language in here when it talks about the budget hearing process. So it says applicants may or may not be invited to make a presentation on their funding proposal. All applicants are encouraged to attend all budget meetings, to remain informed, and they should be prepared to answer questions based on the application. Administratively, how this would work is we would collect all the applications. We would make our recommendation to you all. And then you all can tell us who you want to have come and present. That's, that's worked really well. Sometimes you'll get, you know, a one-off application, again, using the theater as 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 an example. We want $3,000 for a new sound system. You may all say, we don't need to hear from them, that, you know, they're going to go buy a sound system. But you may have, you know, some new organization in town that wants $50,000 for children's programming at the new park. That's probably worth it to have them come in. I've I've sat through those meetings too before where we've required every person who's applied to come in. And the value of that is pub, them publicly stating what the need is. But there's very little interaction between those groups and the council other than thanks for your application. So I I do think we're saying the same thing and I do think it is covered in in the draft policy. But if, you know, if you all desire, we can, we can make it, you know, a requirement. But I would say that based on this language, if you're invited to make a presentation and you don't show up, you're likely not to get funded. That, I, just my thoughts on it.
All right, thank you. I will say, I think possibly one idea is to have thresholds. So like if it's over a certain amount of money, then probably the default is that you are expected to make a presentation. And if it's below a certain threshold, probably can, you know, just submit a report and we look it over. Okay, we're going to go councilman Bill Howard, councilman Shetty, then councilman Buwer.
Thank, thank you, mayor. I've got a question, a couple suggestions, and then a comment. Question first, we we referenced four, 4% of general fund expenditures in the policy itself. I I couldn't tell you what we're, what our current level rises to or or how, where'd the 4% come from?
4% is language from other communities. So we put it in there so that we did have a threshold because right now we don't have any guidelines. It's just
Okay.
Here, approve what what you want.
So I guess I would just ask that, I mean, apparently staff has has looked at this and that does seem reasonable. So I'm just throwing that out as a, as a question where that came from. A couple suggestions now, on the application itself, the bottom, bottom, we say, please include current financial statements. I would also suggest that we ask for a cop, their 990 tax return if applicable. Because that that can shed light on on information that the financial statements themselves may not. Now, some entities, if they, if they are under the umbrella of another organization, would not have a 990, but a lot of these would. So that might be something you want to ask. And then, and then a, a follow-up to that is in the document itself, we say we ask for the organization's current expense statement and budget. I would definitely include the balance sheet and tax return as in addition to the current expense statement and budget. Would be my, my suggestion for a couple of, a little bit of addition there. And I guess my comment is, you know, eight years in the council and having gone through eight years of budget work, this has been a hassle every year. We have tried a lot of different things. I remember one year along with a couple other of my council colleagues sitting down for two days interviewing these applicants. And at the end of the day, the the mayor totally ignored our recommendations anyway and brought forth his own thought. So I support this fully. I guess the cynicism is coming out and saying, at the end of the day, to me, it's still going to end up being a subjective of decision. I know we're trying to make it more objective, more accountable, but I really question if this is going to accomplish anything from a practical standpoint at the end of the day. But I I do wholly support this. That's like to say, the cynicism that's coming out after having gone through this, through eight budget cycles.
Well, we all operate knowing full well that the ultimate decisions are done by the councils. So at least it makes me feel better that we internally have a process to follow. You do with it what you like.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, mayor. Actually, city manager Mac clarified a fair amount of what I was looking at. On that point of of some of the details with this, the page with the highlighted areas here, it does say that there's a but for clause that, you know, the applicant has to have, this won't happen but for this, this funding. It also talks about organizations applying for a donation or subsidy must, must submit a completed application for funding along with the detailed description of the project, a preliminary, preliminary site plan, the amount requested, the duration of the funding request, the public purpose of the product, project, verifiable funding sources and uses, and a but for and analysis which demonstrates the need for the public assistance. So it really is, it does kind of have some wording there that does really clarify that. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilor Tupper.
Just a recommendation, when if if we carry this through, which I certainly hope we do, is is a lot of the information that we're going to ask for is is confidential. You know, we're asking financials. So for them to come in front of a full council and to disclose all that, I would highly recommend not. But to form a committee, you know, whether it be two, three of us or whatever, to sit on that committee and bring our recommendation, just because of the confidentiality of some of the things that's going to be brought into there, to have that committee bring it forward, just just like we did in the past, Glenn. But but I I think this is added in the right direction. Before, we never really, we interviewed them in the past, but never really had any true process. I mean, things are laid out on paper how we're going to do it. So as far as coming to the council twice a year and giving us reports, I don't think that's necessary because, like I say, is we're going to hold them accountable for the dollars that they're asking for. And we, some of the bigger ones, yeah, I mean, they should come to the council just like the WDC does now and then, and whoever else that comes and gives us an annual report, so.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All right, we will see this back in front of us at a future time. City manager Mac, do we want to go to D? No, we still have F as well. Would you prefer?
Sure, no, no.
Or we could just do a very high level?
So D, you have it attached, is the budget calendar for this year. It's purely for your awareness and when we will be plugging the council in, when we'll be having conversations with you all prior to the formal budget hearings. If you have any questions about that, you can certainly reach out to me and or Chris.
Counsel, I will open it up if you have any questions on this. But this will also come back in front of us, I think, at some time. Or is it, no, is this just a presentation?
It's just a presentation of the calendar. You'll notice that we actually are starting earlier than we, than we have.
You just hit the highlights for.
Yeah, so we're starting earlier than we have in in past years. Like I mentioned, Kristen has already sent out the current long-term capital request, operation and maintenance request forms and the new personnel request forms. It went out two weeks ago now already. We'll be bringing the formal external organization policy at the next council meeting. So as soon as that is approved, we will get letters out to all the organizations and advertise that that new policy and the process. And then August, September, we'll be working internally with with departments. We continue to work with our financial management firm, Aylers, on on the financial model. We'll be able to give you a high-level overview of that here in the next couple of months. But that's sort of some guidelines that internally we are using that when we get to the budget presentation, we can share how we came to the recommendations we did. We'll have our budget hearings in October and then first and second reading of the budget appropriation in November and have budget books to everyone by the end of the year. So really trying to streamline everything and have a systematic approach to how we're putting the budget together.
Thank you, city manager. I would just personally like to point out that the timeframe now is August, September, that the city manager prepares a long-term capital plan and proposed budget distributes it to the city council. I know we, as a council, I've had lots of discussion upon the long-term capital plan. And so I would encourage not only us to look that over, but start asking questions early on that so that it doesn't just come to the last meeting and then, oh, okay, what are we going to decide? So, councilman Bill Howard.
Thank, thank you, mayor. As a follow-up or in addition to that, I would, I would like to also suggest, and I know every year the crunch that staff goes through to get us the information. But getting the budget books out to us further ahead of the actual budget hearing, the budget books, well, the CIP book, further ahead of the actual public hearing. I gotta say, some of us probably don't look at it very closely, some of us do dig into it. But I just make that suggestion, especially considering we're going to have at least one, if not a couple, new council members potentially that are going to have to get their feet wet with this also.
Any further discussion? Let's forge ahead with item F, discussion on Second Penny ordinance amendment. City manager Mike.
Thank you, mayor. This is a topic that has been mentioned a few different times. And you'll notice that there's no draft policy or recommendation in front of you. We're trying to gauge what the interest is in in pursuing some type of amendment to the Second Penny. The way that the ordinance is crafted now, it's very specific about how those Second Penny dollars are spent. There's a couple of of thoughts and ideas on how we could bring some flexibility to that Second Penny. Our Second Penny Fund is very healthy. It's healthy year over year. Our general fund, it provides a challenge and most of our operations are funded out of the general fund. So two schools of thought that other communities have have taken, taken into, put into effect. The first is we could amend the ordinance to allow for an annual transfer, the amount to be determined by this body during the budget process from the capital improvement fund to the general fund. So it wouldn't be a set amount annually. It wouldn't be a percentage. It would, we would come during the budget cycle and say, we, we would request X amount of dollars from the capital improvement fund into the general fund. It would not be an ongoing thing. The other school of thought is to add language that would allow for up to a certain percentage, again, approved by this body during the budget process. So up to 25% of the the Second Penny Fund could be transferred to the general fund. It does give some flexibility. There are certain challenges that that might come with making an amendment like that. I just want to, you know, be transparent. We have a lot of capital projects. And and so anything that comes out of that fund and into the general fund could potentially impact future, future projects. You know, so our street projects come from fire trucks, police cars, those kinds of things. So we'd want to be cognizant of that. What we're really just trying to gauge is if you're open for a discussion on that, we can, we can certainly bring some kind of language. I think that if we were going to move forward with it, with an amendment, I I think the the one-time allocation language is is a little, it it protects the CIP fund a little bit more than the up-to percentage language. So I I think it's a good balance between what we have and and just putting a flat percentage in there. But those are decisions for you all to make. So just trying to gauge interest. And if if there is interest, we could prepare an ordinance amendment for consideration here in the near future because that will impact our budgeting process as well. And it's, it would be a simple language change. It's more of a philosophical discussion for you all to have.
And let's begin this philosophical discussion with councilman Tupper.
Well, I would totally support the one-time in in a yearly, you know, if it had to be looked at yearly, I I don't know if I could support a percentage or anything because there are budget changes every year. So in those important parts, keeping our CIP portion of that healthy, you know, I mean, there's going to be years that we're going to need more on the CIP side. And I wouldn't, you know, probably lean toward our our finance manager at that time to give us some good leadership on that, you know, whether or not they can, you know, let's say we need to take a million dollars out of it or whatever for, you know, is it going to leave us enough in our, in our CIP? But the flexibility would be nice to be able to add back into our general fund whenever we need to. So on a yearly basis.
Councilman Danforth.
Uh, thank you, mayor. First of all, Amanda, I I appreciate you bringing this forward. I know you and I have had this discussion, Kristen, you and I over the years have had this discussion. I I'm a strong believer that we need to have a discussion to see where we get, not necessarily exactly what the end result is, but it's certainly a consideration that we have. I do agree that, and I'm not sure what the language is. And I'll be honest with you, I don't really know what the difference is between a percentage and a dollar. What, it it needs to get looked at, that flexibility needs to occur on an annual basis to where if we look at what our needs are, we look at our CIP, we look at the things that we have going on, and we make an assessment of how, what our needs are in the general fund. It's not just to get money over there. It's, we have to justify taking money from that Second Penny and putting it into into the general fund via this process. So it has to be justified and certainly it has to consider the fact that that Second Penny, what it was intended for, and if we can allow for it, we make that decision as a council annually. But so I think I'm all for the direction that we're going here, not knowing what the outcome is going to be. But I have a question, Amanda, on that. When you talked about a percentage, are we talking about of the percentage of the balance within there? Are we talking about a percentage of what is obtained for that year? That the expected income in that fund for the year, the Second Penny? Do we know what you're referring to?
Yeah, I think we, the way we discuss, although we've not said this specifically, is it would be our projected revenues.
Okay, so if I had, like a number, five million dollars in there today, but in for our budget year that we're working on, we were going to get two million. That two million is what we're talking about. Okay, good. And I think that's the right way to do that personally. So, all right, thank you. I think it's a very good discussion to have.
Councilman Buwer.
Thank you, mayor. Couple of questions. One, first off, finance manager Bob Zane, I, what would be the negative ramifications to making this change? Do you see any issues that could be a problem?
No, I don't see any issues. I think what it does is it gives the flexibility. The Second Penny Capital Improvement Fund already has the ability to give to the E911 and also to any of your capital projects. So it does have the flexibility on that, but it doesn't have to give it to the general fund. So I can't see that there's a downside, you know? It just gives you a little bit more flexibility.
Okay, then the 25% is sort of an arbitrary number, I think that we picked it. And that would be a cap for that that particular year.
Right, so like what some other communities do is, I mean, they actually put it in that their Second Penny, every time the revenue is coming in, they're taking 25% of that and that's going straight into the general fund and the 75 is staying. So that's how they're, they're doing it. And I think what we're saying is maybe we're not quite comfortable with doing that every time, but we're willing within that budget process to look at what the need is and identify it that way.
Well, I've always thought, and I, and I do still agree with the idea that this would help us. I think I have this flexibility.
I would, I would just add that one advantage to just having some some general language about transferring to the general fund is, you know, we may have a year where something in the general fund has a need that exceeds 25%, you know? And the the nice thing about the financial model that's being built is that we could pull up in real time. All right, so if we did 25% of the CIP this year, here's how, you know, over the next 10 years, we can expect it to impact that fund. Or, you know, we need to take five million dollars for whatever it is. I think, to your point, councilman Danforth, it's probably one in the same, whether it's a one-time or a percentage. But I think one-time gives us even a little more flexibility. If we were going to do the percentage, to Kristen's point, communities are saying 25% of our revenue is automatically going, 75% is staying, where one-time transfer is, it's not automatic. And we may have years where we don't need to do a transfer.
Councilman Phil Howard.
Thank you, mayor. I guess I'll probably just say the same thing that I've been hearing is that, one, I I think absolutely wanted this conversation. I've had this discussion with some of my council colleagues, mayors, finance officers in the past, and just never, never got anywhere with it or brought it forward. So I'm glad that we're looking at it. I I I'm hesitant to specify a percentage. I I think that.
I, I think that tends to lock us in, and I, I don't like that. I, I do like the flexibility and an annual appropriation that gives that flexibility. I'm not, I wouldn't be ready to make a decision tonight, but I definitely would support that we, that we take a close look at or big look at.
Any further discussion?
Would, would you all be ready for a discussion at the June 6th council meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any old business? Councilman Chuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just maybe me, but, you know, on the council, sometimes you make decisions and we, we question it, but we just got to move forward. But I guess I'm bringing this up as, not because of outside input, but because of just the last council meeting when we were doing the Showmobile. I, I really did appreciate the, the staff in there, you know, looking at the numbers, the business side of it, and determining, you know, that staff hours, and so that's why in the end I, I was like, well, from a business standpoint, that makes sense, just to better allocate our, our staff and their time with the hopes that privatizing the Showmobile would work out. I really do question if that's going to play out that way. I guess, I don't know, how are you going to know with for sure? I guess someone could say they're going to do that, change their mind. So again, hindsight, as I, as I, as I look at this, I guess I'm just bringing it up for the council, that if there's anyone else that's wondering the same thing, that is there any wisdom in pausing the, the sealed bid process? Just to kind of sit this out for the year to see if there's anything we missed, because it was, for me personally, it was a quick thought process, just a little bit of time to kind of process it after, even had more days to think about it, and look at the community as a whole, like, hmm, I'm still wondering if that's the right decision. You know, maybe, maybe it is the right one, but I guess, is there wisdom in pausing the, the sealed bid process to, to really better evaluate this? But I guess I'm just bringing it up to see if there's any other, from the Lone Ranger, well, then that's just fine. So, thank you.
City Manager Mac, I'll allow leniency to address that comment.
Sure. I would just recommend, short of formal council action, to pause the sealed bid process, that you have the discussion and play it out when it's time to either accept or reject the bids. Because we're already accepting them, so people are already submitting bids. I do not know of the deadline off the top of my head. Those will have to come back to you all for approval, and I think that that's an appropriate discussion at that time.
So City Manager Mac, I mean, just to walk people through, so Park and Rec Board will take bids, and then the?
I, I don't know that the Park and Rec Board would need to be involved, because they already made the recommendation to declare it surplus and dispose of it. You all have declared it surplus, so the next step is the Park and Rec Department is accepting the bids, and then they will bring a recommendation to the council, either to accept or reject, and then you can decide accordingly. June 7th is when the bids are due, so it'd be the, the June 21st council meeting we would have. That agenda for your discussion.
Just, we will stay on this topic. Councilman Danforth was next in line. If your comment was about the Showmobile, then now would be a time to say that, otherwise I'm going to go to Councilman Beeler, because I think Councilman Beeler, yours is on this.
See, I just wanted to let Councilman Chuddy know that he is not on this issue. I also think we ought to give some consideration to retaining that Showmobile for, for another year. And I've had quite the public outcry. It's been a big, a lot of people contacted me and, and business, and I don't think I've had one person that said they'd like to see it go, you know? So, and I know I'm, I'm on the Park and Rec Board, not a voting member, and I do realize that they did vote to do that, but I think I would ask my honored constituents here at the council to give a look.
Thank you. Go to Councilman Danforth.
Different topic.
Separate topic unless anyone has anything else on the Showmobile. Councilman Danforth.
Mayor, could you, could you give us a quick update? Because I, I personally have, have wondered where we're at, and have also been asked about where our committed CL review, ordinance review is at, where we're at in that process?
Yes, Councilman, and thank you for that. I have been drafting an email to get to this topic. As the council knows, I've made it a situation where each member of the council could come to me with the ideas that they would like to see changed in the CL or the commercial lake zoning, as it is currently spelled out. And I set the threshold that three councilmen had to all say the same thing for it to bring forward. I do know of one thing that has already hit the three member threshold, and that is having some level of separation in the permitted uses. As you know, there are nine permitted uses, and I would just say, Councilman Danforth, Councilman Beeler, and myself have all agreed that at least looking at a separation, so that there could be maybe like four in one category and five in another, or however that shakes out, that is one item that has hit the threshold for consideration. At that point, it has been stated that we would ask the staff to write up a proposed amendment to the CL zoning, and then that would be brought back to council for discussion as to, is this the correct terminology that we want, or do we want it stronger, do we want it different? I will just say, any other councilman who has anything that they would like to see changed with the CL, I'll give you a couple more days, but we do have to draw that up to an end. So I do know of at least one item that has hit that CL, and I'll give it one more chance for anybody on the council, if you have any ideas. Go to Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate, I appreciate us taking the effort to, to take a look at this, but I don't see what's wrong with discussion. And to thwart discussion because we don't have three people presenting the same thought, we may be missing the boat. Maybe through discussion, maybe we have five people that go, that's a good idea, or that I can understand it. But I think if we, to thwart discussion because we don't have three that represented an idea on consideration for change, I, I think we're only limiting ourselves. I think we're hurting ourselves in regards to trying to get to something that hopefully is, is something we all can, or at least a majority of us can agree to. I just, I, I just think we're, we're probably shorting our, our opportunity for a full evaluation.
And thank you for that, Councilman. When I set that up, it was just to spur the process along. I wanted to be considerate of the council's time, and I had to set something that I thought would have some chance of passage, as opposed to not having the will of the council or having serious consideration of passage. In that regard, it's not anything specific to CL that I was targeting as far as limiting discussion. It was more, I think all of us up here on the council, and everyone that we've worked with in politics before can say, there's, usually with each of us, there's one issue that we feel particularly passionate about. That passion is not necessarily shared with the rest of the council. And to allow, let's say, like, I love a downtown dog park, but if nobody else wants a downtown dog, dog park, I am not going to bring it for council consideration, knowing that it has no chance of passage and nobody seriously wants to discuss it. So it's not that I've been trying to limit discussion, I was trying to prioritize it on ways that we can start making the CL or commercial lake zoning better by starting with something that we think could have chance of passage. So it wasn't necessarily saying we're never going to consider CL amendments again, it was more just, let's focus, we've had a lot of discussion on that, let's focus on something that could be passed, I guess. City Manager Mac?
Yeah, I, I can just provide some additional context to that. Process wise, the way that I had envisioned this based on, of the parameters that the mayor set is that staff would take the, the comments that were submitted by council and create one sort of amendment, whether that be around the permitted uses or whatever else, but then would bring it for a full council discussion, which would probably lend to other, other areas. I, I would imagine when we have the discussion, if it is just on permitted uses, that it's going to be a broad topic discussion of CL as a whole, but the actual language that we would bring that be drafted by the community development staff would be specific to the topics that, how, three, I guess, as, as you said, had specifically commented on. And out of the work session, if, you know, if there's consensus on, on additional amendments, then we can draft accordingly.
Yes, and thank you, City Manager Mac. That is actually what I was hoping for, is, is not to, is not to have it stopped or anything like that. It's more just, this was to provide the direction for the language to be drafted, so then council could have full discussion upon it. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Procedurally, with, with our recommendations, you know, I, I know Mike and I, we've had 30 some years of planning experience, I know I say that all the time, but it, it's true. And, and we've been through a lot of these things over and over and over, and we've revised ordinances many, many times. Procedurally, do we, if we have a meeting on this, we have a subcommittee meeting, we draft what we feel would be a good amendment to the ordinance? Does that then go to the Planning Commission first? Yes. And then, then the Planning Commission would discuss and make it, I mean, they can make the decision, they, we don't want this, and that's kind of the end of it. What's the next step? If, if, no, I, I don't mean that that's the total end of it, but what is, I don't remember, procedurally, what's the next step?
No, it's the Planning Commission. So there's a couple of things they could do. They could decline to take action at all.
Right.
Which then would set a, I think it's a 20 day, and that might be wrong, there's a certain day timeframe, if it hasn't been dealt with within that timeframe, it automatically comes to the council, and then you just need a simple majority to pass it. If they take action on it and they vote to approve, then it's just a simple majority to approve it to the council. Yeah. If they take action and recommend not approving, it would take a super majority of this body to overturn their, their recommendation. So eventually, it all does come back to this body. The method. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and that was part of the reason why I wanted to have at least some level of threshold from the council is because it's not just protecting our time, it's also protecting the Plan Commission, because, you know, they are volunteer soldiers in the realm of city politics, and so I want to be very.
It's 60 or 65 days, not 20, sorry.
Anyway, but thank you for that, Councilman. Any further old business? Councilman Beeler?
Couple of things. I just like, where are we at with our strategic planning, all that process, the work that we've done to date? Where, what, how, where does that stand? Like, any matters? Any matters?
She'd like me to be honest. It's sitting in the file. So there's a, a lot of the work that we identified that's, that's currently ongoing. Talked a lot about policies and procedures, of which we've brought several in front of you. Website revamp, we're currently working with our provider on, on what that looks like, some of the technology we, we wanted to implement. The next real steps honestly are to compile it all into one document and bring it to you all for acceptance, the chocolate approval of it, it's just accepting that we went through this work, and these are the strategic corrections that, that we want to follow.
Is there, is there a timeframe that we're looking at to have that completed? I'm not trying to put you under the gun, but.
No, but you probably should put me under the gun, so I have a clear net line. I think, you know, probably before a new council comes on board, we should have it for you all.
Yeah, and I, I just, if I might, Mayor, could I expand on that? I, I just, one of the things that's kind of near and dear to me, I think, and this comes from over the years, training people, being a teacher, that kind of thing, and that's, and then having the experience of being on the council, having the experience of being on the planning and board of adjustments, you know, that training component to me is a big deal. Bring in some new folks onto the, onto the city council, and, and as we bring people into the, the Planning Commission, I'm sure some of those, those spots could change in the upcoming days. I think it's important that we do the best we can to onboard those people, get them trained, get them acclimated to, to doing that job. Those are important jobs, I think, very important jobs, especially planning and board of adjustments. But also the, obviously, the, the city council, bring people on board so that we can bring them up to speed. You know, we got budgets coming up, and that's a big, big deal to me, is for them to understand budgeting, to look at that and understand what that's all about, where revenues come from, where expenses come from. And, and then, and then if I might, Mayor, one more question, and that's the, the city hall issue, where are we at with that? What's the next step with the city hall, if I might ask?
I included an update on that in the council report that went out a week or two ago, and I'm hesitant to share in a public setting where we're at with that, but it continues to, you know, we continue to work behind the scenes on maybe vastness to work on.
Any further old business? Any new business? Councilman Paulson?
Just ask. I heard there was a recent retirement paperwork submitted. What's the plan with that position?
So, Mike Berger is retirement. It's scheduled to go out in the update to council either tonight or tomorrow, as soon as I can sit in front of my computer and get it sent out. We will evaluate that position internally and determine if, you know, it continues to be a combined position like it is right now, or if it's one that's split, but we'll keep you apprised of, of that process as it moves forward. I think June 30th, is that right, Heath? Is his, his last day? It just came in last week, so no one's really behind the eight ball on, on that news.
Any further new business? Any liaison reports? Any announcements? City Manager Mac?
I have two announcements. It is Public Works Week, we're, got to get out of here soon to go hit our neighborhood walk this evening, but they kicked off those events Saturday with the touch truck event out at the airport. There was a storytime with engineers yesterday. Neighborhood walks today, tomorrow, and Wednesday. Tuesday, there is a happy hour out at the airport, and Thursday is the grand opening of Foundation Plaza at 11:30, ribbon cutting, speeches, all kinds of fanfare and free food. It is also EMS Week, so we are thankful to all of our EMS providers and our Public Works employees. That is it.
Grand opening of Foundation Plaza is 11:30 this, this Thursday. It's got to save your time. Councilman Tupper?
Heath, were you at the airport? Who was the biggest kid out there?
Probably the one that showed up in the coolest car.
So that person will remain nondisclosed for right now. Any further announcements? All right, there's no reason to go into executive session, therefore the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Paulson. Any discussion on that hearing? None, although, motion is to adjourn, all those in favor, please stay out. Any opposed, they may, motion carries.